Okay, I'd like to call this meeting the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board to order. The first order of business is I would like to have a motion to accept Art's meeting notes.
What about the agenda?
Oh, the agenda, yes. The agenda basically stands as written except at the end we have one more application.
Actually, there are two matters, Michael. The published agenda, or the posted agenda, in error, did not include the Blackwood item, which was lost someplace in transit between the IZO's office and the planning board office. The Blackwood item is, however, covered in my meeting notes with proposed resolutions, et cetera. The second item is the late-discovered item, which was also lost someplace in the building, and that is the Rosenbloom application. And that is covered in the supplement, second supplement, to my meeting notes that came out at 2:00 this afternoon.
Okay. Everyone catch that?
I didn't get it.
Okey-dokey. Now could I hear a motion to accept Art's meeting notes? Second?
Aye.
All in favor? Very good. And we have minutes. We have the May 6, 2013 minutes. Have people had the opportunity to read those?
Yeah.
Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any additions or amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
We have the August 19, 2013 minutes. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Yes.
Any additions, amendments, corrections?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think we have one more copy.
Yeah.
February 3rd, yes, the ones we just did. Has everyone had a chance to do those ones over?
Mm-hmm.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any additions or changes?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Our first public hearing is scheduled for 6:35, so I don't have any other announcements or anything else coming up. Anyone else have anything they'd like to mention before we sit here in silence for three minutes?
Can I see a letter from, about Matthews?
Yes. Good idea. We were waiting for the survey of the Matthews subdivision, which is actually a consolidation, and Rewelsh has still not been able to pull that together. So we will be continuing that public hearing.
And that requires a planning board resolution then, prior to motion.
Yeah. So why don't we do that now? Could I hear a motion to continue the Paul Matthews public hearing into our April, what's that?
Seventh.
April 7th meeting at 6:35?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's that. Let's see what else might be in here.
Nothing.
That's too bad. Yeah, everything else looks like it's okay.
Okay.
Opportunity to say something, but there's nothing to be said. You all know that we do have a special meeting on March 17, and at the end of the meeting notes, Art has gone over what those agenda items will be.
And anything else you may.
And anything else that comes up, and so perhaps just for the sake of the public so they can understand what's going to be coming up. If I can find that list.
Depends on what happens to these things.
Among the items.
Among the likely items.
Likely items. Continuation of public hearing, assumption of seeker lead agency status for the Carmichael Road Enterprises project. Continuation is maybe deemed appropriate for the public hearing on the Redwing properties, Paul Matthews and Richard Kopaczynski applications, consideration of draft seeker and approval resolutions, which may be also for those three, Redwing, Paul Matthews, Richard Kopaczynski.
Matthews and Kopaczynski will probably not be involved.
Okay. Consideration of exception to the general page, applications if modified. We are still waiting for a site plan for that application since one of the things they're applying for is site plan review and approval, and anything in that come to us from the town board, the ZBA, or the IZO.
No, there's nothing.
So that would be that. So, and yet the clock has still not, well, it's close. Okay, I think that's 6:35. Okay. Our first public hearing is on Redwing Properties, the former Vincent Kinlan mine. This is for the continuation from February 3, combined public hearing, application for special use permit and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 in the matter of requested special use permit to authorize continued mining within nine acres of a 38-acre life of mine area within the RC 5 and soil mining overlay district, and to introduce within that 38-acre life of mine area a nine-acre area subaqueous mining with related installation of DEC-approved turtle fence. The representative of the applicant would like to present.
My name is Paul Greigs. I'm a consulting geologist for Redwing Properties, the landowner and applicant. Within here I have Frank Doherty, who's president of Redwing Properties. What we are proposing is, there's been a mine at this location since the late 1980s at the very least. I know I've been working on this site since 1991. The area that's shaded right here is the area that we are seeking permits to continue mining. The above-water area would be the entire shaded area, and then this blue outlined area, the nine acres here, would be the area that we are now proposing to go below water. Traditionally, up until this application, we've been staying above water. Access, you know, from White Schoolhouse Road has been by an existing driveway that comes across here, comes into the mine. The purple areas on this map are areas that we have mined out and reclaimed. The tan areas are areas that we have mined, have not yet reclaimed, or we plan to continue mining. The green areas here are areas that we have not yet mined, and we're proposing to mine during the next five-year permit term. In terms of what we're proposing to do there, we're mining sand and gravel, no blasting, no rock excavation proposed. We are going to come here on the areas that haven't been mined yet, take down the trees, remove the soil, put it aside for use in reclamation, excavate the material out from the bottom of the face with a front-end loader, you know, send that, either load that into trucks, haul it off the site, or send it to a small portable processing plant, which is currently set up in the northern part of the property over here, process that down into products that can be used in the local market area. In terms of that, that process is the same process that we have been using there since the late 1980s. In terms of the below-water mining there, it's a little different, slightly different mining process. Instead of using a loader to dig material out of a bank, you have an excavator or dredge that will scoop material out, place it onto the, the excavator will place the material onto the shoreline, let the water seep back down into the pond, then a loader will come up, load it into the trucks, and the process would be the same as when you had the below-water, the above-water mining. For the lower part of the pond, there's just not enough reach for the excavator to get all the way to the bottom. We'd have a small dredge, it would float on the, on the water, and it would suck the sand and the gravel from the bottom of the pond in a, you know, pipeline that would go off into this little decant basin here. The purpose of the decant basin is to let the water separate from the sand and gravel, drain back into the pond. Once the sand and gravel is de-watered, it can be, you know, loaded into trucks, or it can be processed, just like the above-water material. At the end of this, you know, area here, we will grade off the side slopes here, replace the topsoil that's been saved for use in reclamation, and we would, you know, revegetate it to open grassland. The pond area here will remain as a pond. We do have a DEC mining permit for this. It was granted last year, so we have a lot of, you know, we went through about a two-year process to get the permit modified and renewed on, for this, with, through DEC. All that information has been provided to the town planning board, and we're working out a couple of details with the planning board at this time, but got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, I guess I'll first ask any members of the planning board any questions. Because the other thing is, I have a number of letters which have been submitted. I guess what I'll start doing, and then we can open it to the floor, is I will read your name, and if you would like to read your letter, or make a different comment, we can certainly do that, or I can read it. So that might be the quickest way to go about this, till my voice gets out. Linda and Ed Faber? Shall I, I shall read this? Then I will read this one. "To Michael Trimble, Chair of Rhinebeck Town Planning Board. Dear Michael, we live at 289 White Schoolhouse Road. We cannot attend the planning board meeting tonight on Monday, March 3, so we hope you will read our letter into the record in consideration of Redwing's proposal, continue mining the former Kinlan property on White Schoolhouse Road. We are totally opposed to Redwing's application and cannot understand why this issue was not brought before the residents of White Schoolhouse Road prior to DEC's approval last spring. However, the current issue of Redwing's access to the property is crucial to us. The previous road has been closed to Redwing, and their only opening to White Schoolhouse Road appears to be directly opposite our house. We deplore increased traffic and heavier vehicles destroying the roadbed and atmosphere of the scenic country road to which we moved four years ago. We hope that the planning board will review the question of access and decide to deny alternate, alternate access roads proposed by Redwing. Thank you and the planning board for your thoughtfulness and thoroughness in this matter," and that's Linda and Ed Faber. The next one I have is from Yoram and Felice Gilman. Okay, would they, I'm sorry, okay, I will read this one. Should put my glasses back on, I can see something. "Dear Planning Board, we won't be able to attend tonight's meeting, but hope you will take this letter into consideration in your discussion and deliberation. We built a house on White Schoolhouse Road 30 years ago. We loved its wooded surroundings, abundant natural life, and rural character. We understand Redwing Properties has acquired the rights to mine the former Kinlan property and is asking for a special use permit to do subaqueous mining and create a nine-acre lake. We are well aware of the gravel vein that runs most of the length of White Schoolhouse Road. A small area has been mined for many years by the Von der Leef family, and another small area was mined off and on by Jeff Decker. However, Redwing's plans are a magnitude greater than either of these two local businesses, both of whom provided gravel just locally. Redwing is a large company that supplies gravel to most of the Hudson Valley. In its current use of its properties, it has already demonstrated disregard for limitations on its activities, and it has been our experience that enforcement of rules limiting activities is no easy matter if an operator chooses to disregard them. It seems the enforcing authorities would be the Dutchess County Sheriff for truck traffic and the zoning officer, limitations on mining activity, burning, et cetera. Neither of them has the resources to devote to daily enforcement of regulations on a major operator. Truck traffic is already a problem on White Schoolhouse Road with the limited local mining operations. The town has had to pave and widen the road to accommodate that traffic, and trucks continue to drive at speeds that are unsafe for pedestrians. The noise, dust, and truck traffic that Redwing's mining operations will create will destroy a residential neighborhood. In exchange, Redwing is offering little of value to the town. They will be required to reclaim the area and create a lake, but for the next 15 to 20 years, Rhinebeck will be the loser in terms of property tax, infrastructure costs, and rural character. We urge the planning board to consider all the issues carefully and to review the environmental impact statement filed when Redwing made its final, made its initial application to the Department of Environmental Conservation. Thank you for consideration, Yoram and Felice Gilman." Okay. Doreen Hunt. Would you like to read your letter, or would you like me to?
I would.
Okay. "My residence is on White Schoolhouse Road, and for 13 years I see and hear huge gravel trucks speeding towards gravel pits owned by Redwing Properties. The mine is on the west side of White Schoolhouse Road. This is a narrow country road several miles long between Route 308 and Slate Quarry Road. There are homes on both sides of this road. It is a beautiful area of the town of Rhinebeck. The Department of Environmental Conservation is involved in allowing this mining to continue at a much larger scale. 120 acres have been sold to Redwing by Vincent Kinlan. Will this mining continue for generations? The mine has already stripped the skin off the earth since the 1970s. The natural environment needs conserving and protection. This is an appeal to the planning board to be involved and protect the beauty of the town of Rhinebeck." Doreen T. Hunt. I hope I get this name right. Dr. George Raskakis? Okay, well, I will continue. "Respectfully, as you are aware, I live at 103 White Schoolhouse Road, and apologize for being unable to be here in person. I really should read these first sentences. I am writing with respect to the nine-acre pond plan for Redwing Properties on White Schoolhouse Road. I have heard many say that because mining has always been allowed on the road, it is okay to continue to allow it. This is a dangerous thought process I would like to address. Simply because something has been done the same way for years does not make it right. In fact, it has been the direct cause for the bankruptcy of many large corporations such as Swissair, Polaroid, Commodore, Delorean, and Pan Am. All once proud and profitable companies whose lack of foresight and failure to change with the times ultimately led to their demise. We have a wonderful and proud community, one with a rich heritage and the vision to prevent the spread of commercialism, preserving the character that brought us all here in the first place. It is frequently easy to allow things to be as they are, change being something we all struggle with. However, this is a case where the benefits outweigh the risks. Please do not grant the special permit." Okay, I read the first sentence, and Sue Greenberg and Mel Dishewitz? Would you like to read it, or would you like me to read it?
You can read it, but I have a number.
Okay.
That's from last reading.
Well, why don't I go with the current, current edition? "Dear Planning Board, my husband and I have been living at 63 White Schoolhouse Road for 14 years. We understand that Redwing Properties has acquired the rights to the former Kinlan property and have requested a special use permit to mine the existing 35.5-acre property and create a nine-acre lake. We are terribly concerned and are opposed to this mining operation. For many years, the mining on this site has been minimal and respectful of the community without inconvenience or risk to residents. Although truck traffic is surprisingly busy for a rural road, Redwing, a large corporation who has no ties to our community, has much bigger plans for this site. These plans are inconsistent with the peace and quiet of a rural road consisting of homeowners with families and farmers. Our fear is that Redwing's proposal will not protect the environment, infrastructure, or character of our neighborhood. That loud, huge trucks rumbling down White Schoolhouse Road creating noise, dust, potholes, air quality degradation, will create a highway on a residential road changing the complexion of our street for years to come. We and our neighbors from the adjacent roads often walk and bike ride on White Schoolhouse Road. Will we lose our ability to peacefully and safely continue to do this? Further, how will this ultimately impact the outlying main roads, Route 308, Route 9, Route 9G, where trucks travel to and from to get to White Schoolhouse Road? Who is to determine and who will regulate Redwing's operations? How many trucks, how many hours, how many days a week will we be subject to their work, and to what end, and to whose benefit? We urge the planning board to consider how this operation will affect residents and employees to rethink Redwing's proposal and the impact on area residents."
Michael, what's the date on that letter? It's different than the letter that I-
Yes, March 3. It's today.
March 3, okay. The letter in the packet here then is the February 24.
Is February 24, yes. Okay. Charlie?
Charlie?
Let me put my glasses on.
Please.
Hi, you want to read your letter, or shall I read it?
Oh, this is my letter.
Yeah, this one is dated February 23.
It was at the last meeting.
I've got a statement I'll make, so you don't have to-
Okay, okay.
It wasn't got it from last day or two?
No, we've had it for a while.
These are ones that have been received since last-
Yeah. Ed and Pat Roberts?
Me, too.
I will continue. "Dear Town Planning Board Members, my wife and I live on 141 White Schoolhouse Road and have become very concerned about the proposed mining operation that Redwing intends to pursue. Our road is very beautiful, quiet, and residential. The impact of their proposal on this road would be devastating for all who live here, as well as adjacent roads. I and other neighbors walk our dogs on this road. Up to this point, there has not been an incident with either Jeff Decker or Rich Von der Leef regarding their trucks, as they have always been considered of others on the road, but this new proposal changes all of that. Safety on the road, as well as constant traffic, dust, and noise levels would definitely be issues of great concern. The number of trucks would increase dramatically, causing major concerns for all, not only on White Schoolhouse Road, but at their entrance beginning on Route 308. We live in a peaceful community, and Rhinebeck has always committed itself to preserving its rural beauty as well as its character. Major companies like McDonald's have not been allowed in so that we might keep our small-town character, and this has been appreciated by all who live here. However, allowing a large mining operation like this to operate in a town road like ours is really not consistent with that philosophy. I would hope that the concerns of the citizens of Rhinebeck would take priority over the outside corporation like Redwing. As concerned citizens, many of us on our road are hoping that the town board would consider revising zoning. We all know that you make the right decision, will make the right decision based on what you have done in the past to preserve the integrity of Rhinebeck."
Michael, you should drop back to Mr. Westler's letter. That letter is February 23, which was, which followed, which followed the last planning board meeting. So that is in fact the new letter for today.
Oh, okay. So I shall read, I should read the previous missive.
Sure.
And then, anyone can then certainly speak, just trying to go through what we have so that if everyone has it, it's being on pandas, so everyone will know what's been submitted. "Dear Members of the Town Board," and I believe I actually meant the Planning Board.
Yeah, I meant Planning Board.
Okay. "I know that you've all received several emails from the collective neighbors on or near White Schoolhouse Road. As you can see, we are all quite passionate about stopping Redwing Properties from digging and mining the so-called nine-acre, 35-foot-deep lake on the existing 38-acre property currently occupied by Jeff Decker. I have included just one of the letters from our group below as it succinctly addresses most of our concerns. Additionally, I would refer you to an email letter that I sent to the Town Board and others on February 17, also regarding the Redwing mining. The only thing I can think to add to these letters is that we are told that it is unlikely that the planning board has the legal power to influence or stop this devastating project from moving forward. So while we know this issue is not yet before your board, we would like you to know that we are looking to all of you as our representatives to help us. Please save us from the horrible misery that will be Redwing mining near all of our homes. Understand that we absolutely appreciate the complicated position we are asking you to take. We also appreciate your working with us and giving us important subject serious consideration."
And there's a PS on that letter.
Yes. And the PS is, "It is still quite baffling to all of us how the DEC can approve an extension to the mining without hearing from one citizen who lives in the affected area. The notion that we must keep our eyes peeled on the DEC website in order to know that there will be a period of public comment is crazy talk. As you can guess, not one citizen living within a mile of the proposed nine-acre lake had the opportunity to comment in any way. Not one of us. Oh, and you could have imagined what our comments might have been."
You also need to go back to the Greenberg letter that's in the packet. The Greenberg letter in the packet is also post-last meeting.
Okay.
February 24.
Okay, well, I did read that one.
No, not February 24.
I didn't, oh. That someone's keeping track of this.
You have a different one. You have one from March 3.
Oh, okay. That's right. "Dear Town Board Members, my husband and I have lived at 63 White Schoolhouse Road in Rhinebeck for 14 years and have recently learned about a proposed large-scale mining operation being pursued by Redwing Properties. We understand that the Town Planning Board has responsibility for decisions regarding this proposal, but we are appealing to our Town Council for protection from what will potentially destroy our quiet residential road and ultimately impact our entire community. We believe the expansiveness of this mining projects warrant a revision to the town zoning. Our concerns are about loud, huge trucks rumbling down White Schoolhouse Road creating noise, dust, potholes, and creating a highway on a residential road changing the complexion of our street and adversely affecting our property values. We and our neighbors from adjacent roads will also lose the ability to peacefully and safely walk or bike ride on the street. We know Rhinebeck is committed to preserving its beauty and rural character, and we do not believe that either the proposal to permit the existing mine or the huge expansion proposal seems consistent with this commitment. It does not serve its residents well and seems to benefit a very large company without roots in our community. Board members and our representatives, as representatives of our community, we strongly urge you to consider our concerns and quality of life here as you address this matter." Hold on, I got that one. Yes. Steve and Pat, you up? Do you want me to read? Okay. We're gonna need help soon. "Dear Town Planning Board, we are writing to you with our concerns with a Redwing mining permit. At the February, at the February 3 meeting, you read letters from the Town Highway Department and the CAB. Both seem to us to be against the mine expansion. Who will monitor for damage control? We have a huge wetland that continues to be, that continues to the Redwing property. It is extremely diverse, including but not limited to the Blandings Turtle. What impact will digging into the aquifer have on this? The employee for Redwing stated that they would not damage the aquifer. I don't think he would be a Redwing employee if he had said it could happen. We still need to know what will be done if Murphy's Law strikes and it does happen. Everything we read states that you cannot fix it once you damage it. Two years ago, the town of Rhinebeck spent a lot of time and money on the comprehensive plan, a plan that had the intent on saving the rural character of Rhinebeck. The mine is in the RC 5 district. How does a mega-mine fit into the rural character of Rhinebeck? Rhinebeck is known as a beautiful rural community that has committed to remaining a small community. It is the reason you don't see a McDonald's or a tractor supply store. How is allowing a major profit-driven corporate mining operation staying within these values? Jeff Decker stated that he would have a year-to-year contract. So did, so did Mr. Doherty state that. He would be out once Redwing was done in Elizaville. You seem to be basing your decision on the fact that it will be run the same as it has been. Mr. Doherty stated quietly that they would be done at their current location in about a year. I heard him because he sat just behind me. If you give them a five-year extension, who is there to oversee the last four years after Jeff is gone that it has run the same? I also believe Michael Trimble stated that someone would go and check out the Elizaville location. If they are at the tail end of that operation, then I do not believe you will find a true picture of how it will be when we have a full operation of materials to work with. There was an ordinance that only allowed 10-wheel trucks and did not allow triaxles and tractor trailers. Will this still be the case? The question was asked, but neither Mr. Doherty nor his employee that was speaking for it said anything. I can't believe that they do not know. The high volume of trucks, regardless of their size, will destroy the roads and bridges at a faster pace, an increase to all the town's residents' taxes. Property value and taxes. If this is allowed, I am sure that our property value will drop drastically. As Richard Murray so elegantly stated, he did not buy a house with a mine on it. I know I will want to be reassessed. This will not affect just my home, that sits right on the mine. I am sure it will affect all the houses on White Schoolhouse Road and bordering areas." Damage control, if this is allowed. Type of trucks? Yardage per day? Limit of the amount of gravel to be moved in a day? Hours of operation? Eight to four, so that school buses are off the road and people can travel to and from work safely? No Saturdays or Sundays? None. There is no one to keep track of their four Saturdays? Rules are made, but that rule, but the rulemakers are not the enforcers. We need enforcers. Amount of equipment? At this time, Jeff has one loader. They say there will be no noise, there will be no noise, then they, two should be limited to one loader. Entrance and exits? The town could and should ban commercial mining trucks from utilizing town roads. Mandate that they must have direct access to county or state highways? This would totally alleviate the issue of gravel trucks destroying the rural character of Rhinebeck. Ninety percent of the issue is the gravel trucks on rural road. Take that away, and then it is just the noise and the environmental issues that we need to monitor and control. We, all right, who do we call when there are problems? Who will keep them following the procedure? When they were burning their clear-cut trees, which we now know they did not get permission to do, no one could help. The smoke was so bad, we could not breathe, so we had to leave our homes for the duration. We called the town, and we were told that there was nothing they could do. We called the fire department, and we were told that if we felt we were in danger, then call 911. At the February meeting, we were told we should call DEC. Is that who we should call in the future? Should you allow this to happen, will you then wash your hands of any of the consequences? Our house and barns have been on this road since the 1700s. There is significant historical value to our property. They are very close to the road, and our barn has been clipped once, that we know of already, by a dump truck. A large operation such as Redwing will impose a threat and a danger not only to our property, but to the properties of all of our neighbors. We have a working relationship... We had a working relationship with Mr. Kinlan. We used his property to farm our produce. They were able to go through our land to get to the mine. That will no longer be the case. They will not have access through our property. They will have to provide a southern entrance to the mine." Steven Peck, Robatsky. And I have a... Is it the same letter?
I think it's the same letter.
Ed and Pat Roberts?
Yeah.
Okay. And I don't believe I have read this one. Okay. This is from Jorm Gellman. This is to members of the Town Board, and I believe the members of the Planning Board. "We have lived in Reinbeck for over 30 years. I am ready to encourage you to do all... you all to do anything possible to prevent using White Schoolhouse Road for hauling mining products and/or equipment associated with Red Wing's proposed new mining operations. I'm including the presently proposed so-called mine, nine-acre pond, and the larger-than-one-acre expanded mining proposal in my concern. There must be additional time for disclosure and more public discussion. The DEC approval took place with hardly any public disclosure. My immediate concern is that Red Wing has already broken several regulations, specifically by clearcutting and burning several tens of acres it now owns in the town. To date, there have been no legal steps taken to prosecute them for these occurrences due to lack of insurability. If Red Wing succeeds in getting permission to operate, the regulations as to operating procedures will again be ignored due to the inability to adequately monitor activities regarding, for example, hours and/or days of operation, size of trucks, number of trucks, and noise. Not only will immediate residents be affected, but by multiplier effects, the entire town, village, and region will suffer because the town of Reinbeck allowed such an activity within its borders. These matters are of vital concern to my family and should be equally of concern to And... Okay, we have one more letter. Felice Gilman. "We live at 407 White Schoolhouse Road... We have lived at 407 White Schoolhouse Road since 1983. Now I learn almost accidentally and belatedly that the Planning Board is considering a substantial expansion of gravel mining activities for Red Wing properties, an operator that, according to the website, provides sand and gravel for most of the Hudson Valley. The approval of a special use permit to allow subacqueous mining, dredging of a nine-acre area is just the beginning of Red Wing's plans to exploit more than 100 acres along White Schoolhouse Road for sand and gravel mining. Why should anyone other than the people living alongside this planned behemoth mining operation care? The character of the Reinbeck community. Historically, Reinbeck has very successfully prevented the heavy industrial and commercial development that has marred the appeal of many Hudson Valley towns. Reinbeck's reward for its foresighted planning has been that it thrives as a destination for tourists, second homeowners, and people seeking a more rural and pleasant quality of life. Property values have benefited, and jobs have been created. It's hard to imagine that a noisy extractive industry, clearing and burning of woods, digging more massive quarries, crushing stone, and requiring large numbers of very heavy trucks to transport its gravel will contribute to the image Reinbeck has successfully created. Yes, the gravel vein along White Schoolhouse Road has been the site of mining operations for a long time. It has been mined by local people with limited operations, sensitive and responsive to their neighbors' concerns. And those were mining operations for our local use, not a huge company transporting gravel the length and breadth of the Hudson Valley. The cost to the town in infrastructure expense and future revenues. Those heavy trucks that Red Wing would like to send rumbling down White Schoolhouse Road, laden with gravel, will continue to travel on our roads. White Schoolhouse Road will not withstand the traffic. Lake Quarry Road with its blind curves will become even more dangerous than it already is. If the traffic is limited to state routes, who will be enforcing those rules, and who will pay for the additional burden of enforcement? The town will be sacrificing for 30 to 40 years any possible residential development of a prime area and the associated property taxes. I urge the Planning Board to adjourn consideration of the special use permit in favor of additional public discussion. Even most of the people directly affected along White Schoolhouse Road have only recently been made aware of the issue. A drastic land use change such as this deserves much more public attention. I urge the Town Board to consider the possibility of rezoning to eliminate the possibility of extensive gravel mining. Thank you. Felice Gilman." Those are the letters that we have. I'll now open the floor. What we'll ask you to do is if you would come up to the microphone, identify yourself. That way, it gets on tape, and everyone's name is known. So...
My name is Charles Westler. I live on Bolin Becker Road, which is just on the other side of the mine. I guess that's the north side? Northeast? Right next northwest.
Yes, sorry.
Right next to the Duncanbergs and other families. And a point that I had come... that I had made... I sat at the last meeting where we were unable... we were unable. We were asked not to make comments at your last planning meeting. But I waited until the very end. Everybody had gone, and you guys were still here for a minute. And very kindly, you actually asked me if I had a question, and I did. And I just wanted to make a point, which I wanted to make in front of everybody else, which is, people keep saying... I say people, everybody. I mean, from all sides of this, keep saying, "We just want to keep doing what has historically been done." And A, I don't agree with that principle, number one. Number two, historically, of the last six years in particular... I've lived there for about 12 years. There has been virtually no mining going on. So historically, for me and everybody who lives around there, we maybe see a couple trucks every other day. There is no mining that's going on every... maybe once every couple of weeks. If Mr. Decker is here, he could probably back me up on this. There might be some mining that goes on once a week. Every three weeks or so, they'll mine some stuff, and then they'll use it. But it's a very, super, super low-key operation. I must say, I don't think I've heard a truck or a beeping backup noise in, I don't know, a couple of months. So... And before that, three months before that. So I think there's a misconception about what the norm has been over the last few years, meaning six, seven years, whatever that may be. In fact, frankly, I can't remember anything. Pardon me? It could be longer. I don't... Yes, I've heard noise on rare occasions. I'm not saying there is no noise, but it's very rare and far between. So I just want to make that point, because I think it's kind of super important that if you're gonna make your decision on historical mining, that's the truth. That's a fact, okay? And you can ask everybody here and everybody who lives in the neighborhood. I think they'll back me up. The other thing I wanted to ask is, the thing that we've also been told as a group, and we know is a fact, is that you guys don't have the decision to say, "Hey, go away. You're not allowed in Reinbeck anymore." Your only choice is to... and you can correct me if I'm wrong. Your only choice is to say to a Red Wing or any other company is, "Look, we can limit you to the amount of trucks you have, the amount of traffic you have, the amount of hours you work, you know, whether it's a Saturday or no Saturdays." So I would say... And when I've asked a couple people why that would... why people... why it couldn't say, "Well, you can have more than two trucks a day," for example. And you can only do four days a week for six hours each day, you know, of those... Which is super reasonable. I mean, for me, for a resident, I was told that, "Well, there'll be a lawsuit." And I'm thinking, "Well, that's too bad." I mean, you know, I don't want a lawsuit, believe me. That's the last thing I want. I think those always end up badly for everybody. I'm just saying, I think we have to make the... I hope we will, as a town, will make the right decision and then worry about the lawsuit later. Certainly, I think I can speak for... I can almost speak for them, but I can speak for myself and say that I would be willing to pay an additional extra tax to contribute to that if that had to happen. But that's not... that's the last thing we want to talk about. And that's really all I wanted to say, is that personally, I'm against having the mine there, but since you can't make that decision, you know, hopefully you'll limit it to a truck a month. And the last thing I'll say, I wanted to ask... I'm sorry for taking so much time here, but there was a question I wanted to ask about... Oh, God. It'll come up in a minute. If I can... Is it okay if I come back? Oh, thank you.
Thanks very much. Yes.
I don't think you can go to get up, but I just do have a question.
But we just need to get you on... I think we can maybe...
I have to because of the...
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Sue Greenberg, and this is the first time I've ever attended any meeting. Sorry. My name is Sue Greenberg. I'm at 63 White Schoolhouse Road. I've never attended any of these meetings before, so I'm not that comfortable. But obviously, we all are represented here because we all oppose to this project. And my question, and coming into this pretty late in the game, having absolutely no idea that what was going on, that not understanding how the DEC can approve this without any of our knowledge whatsoever. So here we are at the Planning Board meeting, and my question is, what can you guys do? We're appealing to you. What can we expect? What...
Okay, well, the control that the Planning Board has is basically over ingress and egress to the mine, you know, where the entrance is, where the roads are, the size of the trucks, the hours of operation, the routes that the trucks use on town roads to transport materials. And that's pretty much it.
Approval of the... in concert with DEC, approval of the reclamation plan?
Right.
Is within Town Board.
Yes.
The approval of the reclamation plan?
Right.
Is a matter of joint authority between DEC and the Planning Board.
So it's not necessarily a done deal, then?
No. No.
The permit for the mine is a done deal.
The permit from DEC is a done deal, but the access to get to the mine, to get the material out of it, is not.
So whatever you need from us, we are here. We've gotten together an email address. You can reach any of us. If there's any more appeals that we can make or anything that we can say, just know that we're all a team here, and we really don't want this to happen.
Just for my edification, just by a show of hands, how many people are here tonight with...
From that neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
My name is Doreen Hunt. I live at 97 White Schoolhouse Road, and I read that they are forecasting perhaps 20 trucks daily with this expanded operation, but actually, that would be 40 trips inbound and outbound. And then if you multiply that by a five-day week, that's 200 trucks, 200 trips on White Schoolhouse Road. And then per month, four weeks, it's 800 trucks going by. What I mean is the trips. And then yearly, let's say they only operate between April through November, that's eight months, that adds up to 6,400 trucks. So I'm... And I'm only... That number is possibly not even going to be the real number. So that's my issue.
Thank you.
I'm not even addressing the terrific sounds and noises that's going to come from that acreage when they start mining. I'm not... I've lived with the trucks coming down the street, and some of them do go too quick... too fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
My name's Carl Duncanberg. My family lives on the end of Bolin Becker Road. I just... I gave my general impassioned speech at the last meeting, but I just wanted to touch on one particular point that my neighbor Charlie actually touched on a few minutes ago. Just to take everyone back, I don't know how many of us lived in the area prior to the mine, but a lot has been made, in my estimation, of the fact that this is a mining property, that that's what this property is, and that to say no to it in any way would be to make a change. And of course, as someone else said prior to me, that that's always difficult, once the word "change" comes up. I'd just like to take everyone back to a time I was young, but my parents weren't. And, you know, as I said, our residency predated any mining activity by a number of years. We were there from, I guess, 1979 or '80. And the way it was presented to the residents that were involved at the time was that this was, as far as we knew at the time, a one-time permit, that when any permits ran out, that there would be major discussion about any mining continuing, the zoning overlay, the mining overlay staying as it is, and that none of this was a foregone conclusion. Not to mention that they let us know that this was, you know, a local mom-and-pop organization that was supplying the gravel locally. Now, pretty much all of those things, in my mind, have changed. This is no longer a local company. It's a much larger company, and we would have been amazed if it had been mentioned to us that this would ever, not only continue for 30, almost 30 years now, but that it would grow. So I just ask that the current Planning Board members take that into consideration.
Thank you. Yes.
My name is Teresa Velardi, and I live at 133 White Schoolhouse Road. I don't want to add to all the letters. I agree with all of them, and obviously, I'm sympathetic to all of them. But I want to say something, it's sort of like a point of order, because I think we have a lot of confusion going on. And I'm gonna read this, okay? "The letters that were read tonight speak for me as well as for many other residents on White Schoolhouse Road and Bolin Becker Roads. We also fell in love with the rural landscape just three miles from the Reinbeck Village. We have... and I have actually frequently written about the road and the people who live on it. When my husband and I moved here in 1995, a realtor told us that the mines on the road were run by families who lived on the road. That obviously is no longer the case. It maybe hasn't been for a while, but it certainly is not going to be the case in the future. But what does bear repeating, though, is that the residents of White Schoolhouse Road and Bolin Becker Roads do know what this meeting is about tonight. That is, it's Red Wing's application before the Planning Board for a special use permit for the existing 37.5-mile-acre mine with a nine-acre pond or lake. This is the issue pending before the Board, and I have to commend the Board for trying to keep this issue in front of us, because they're not doing something that some other Board would have done, and they're not doing something for the future, but for now. But I think it's difficult to really stick to the issue before us. It's not informing residents... and not informing residents about the background to this most recent application. We feel that the Board disregarded our rights as homeowners and residents of the town of Reinbeck. I mean, it might be understandable that many of us on White Schoolhouse Road were not aware of Red Wing's purchase of Vincent Kinlan's land, but it's less easy to understand why we were also never informed about Red Wing's application to the DEC and its outcomes. Red Wing is not a local business. No one from Red Wing lives on the road. There are no neighbors. We wish them well, but we don't want them here on this road. We also cannot ignore what others know, that Red Wing has another application pending for 125-acre property, which I realize is not the subject of this meeting, but it's hard to pretend that we don't know that. And this expansion of their mining activities would result in Red Wing's bringing in many more trucks, possibly dredging machinery, and bringing in at the same time more dirt, more noise, more traffic, while putting walkers and cyclists and schoolchildren at much greater risk. Since Red Wing's long-term intentions cannot be ignored, and since the 37.5-acre mine and nine-acre pond is all we have before us tonight, then I want to call for the Planning Board to stop the Red Wing expansion now. Thanks."
Thank you. Yes.
My name is Sarah Hardman. I live at 235 White Schoolhouse Road. I too wrote an impassioned letter about the dust and the noise and the tourists that come to our community to buy their Christmas trees and their pumpkins. I'd like to enter into a record, but I would like to take one particular position here, which is to give you each a little turtle. Because April is coming up, too. Mating season for the Blandings turtles. They live in our wetlands, and if there is mining going on, they will not be here anymore. And not only our turtles, but all over the world, they're endangered. And if we destroy them, we're helping to destroy our earth. So I'd like to, if I may, give you each a turtle. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Yes.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Barnett, and I'm here with my husband, Tim Allenbrook. We've written a letter, and I don't know if I need to read it, because it's essentially the same thing as what everybody else has said, but we do really want to express our view that Reinbeck is special. I mean, it's really unique. You know, we looked for a long... I grew up across the river in New Paltz, and when we decided to move to the Hudson Valley, we looked all around the area and decided that this was the place we wanted to be. And, you know, we love White Schoolhouse Road and want to see it preserved. We actually live right next to the current mine area, and, you know, we were aware of that when we bought it, and we're told it was, you know, locally owned and so on. And we really want to make sure that, you know, you take whatever measures are in your power to keep the tranquil, pleasant, beautiful community that we have now. So I'll give you this letter to put me on...
Yes. Thank you. Have we heard that one yet? Because I can read it. Yes. Yes. I'm sorry. I was miles away overlooking that way.
Good evening. My name is Rick Riley. I'm not a resident of White Schoolhouse Road, but Cedar Lane, which is the Second Street Inn from Route 308. And I've been a resident and owner there for about 34 years now, which I think is probably as long as anybody that's here tonight. And there's been kind of an up and down as far as the mining activities, and really the activities that I'm aware of are the trucks. And that has gone up and down and up and down over the years. But it's always been a major concern. I used to walk on White Schoolhouse, and maybe 10 or 15 years ago, that was no longer an option. I was walking on the street, and this happened twice, actually, where the trucks were coming down from the... down from the, down the hill where Cedar Lane is, and they're roaring down that hill. And if there's another car heading in the opposite direction, there's almost not enough room on that, on the street to accommodate it, and certainly, if there's a truck and a car coming, and you're walking on White Schoolhouse Road. I mean, I ended up on Sue's front lawn a couple times, getting, getting out of the way of the trucks. And also, I wonder if the planning board has considered or researched, and I'm not sure you even could do it, but I remember this discussion maybe 20 years ago, and there were limitations put on the size of the trucks, the hours of operation, how many trucks, is my recollection, that's about as far as my memory can go. I know I had two children that are grown now, but they were forbidden to go past the crest of the road on Cedar Lane because of this. I know that there used to be a school bus stop at the bottom of Cedar Lane, and the school district took that stop away because of this issue. Because, if you're not familiar, the road, again, to the south of Cedar Lane tips into a pretty good hill coming down, and there were a couple of times where trucks almost lost control coming down that hill, especially when the roads are snow-covered. And at one time, put a car off the road, because they, they came into the opposite lane. So, and again, that historic perspective, perspective, I know there was major discussions on this some time ago, and, you know, as far as the, you know, the Deckers and the Von Reliefs, the wonderful local families, and have been for many, many years, they were always respectful of our, of the issues that we're discussing, discussing tonight, and it's not to say that Red Wing won't be. But I think there has to be, if this is a fait accompli, I think there has to be a careful set of guidelines as far as how many trucks, how often, hours of operation. Again, the noise, et cetera, to me, where my house is, I don't hear it so much, I hear the gun club, but that's another issue. But I will tell you that that strip, at least from the top of the hill on White Schoolhouse to the south of Cedar Lane, to the end of 308, is a raceway. And it's very hard to control, I understand, and to police, and I don't think that we're equipped to do that. But as I say, my children were forbidden to going on the road at all, the school bus stop was taken away, which actually helped me, because then the school bus came down by my house. But I'm quite sure that that was the reason for that, and also, that the hill that comes down, down White Schoolhouse at that point, is very dangerous, especially in the, in bad weather times. The town of Rhinebeck takes, takes very good care of White Schoolhouse Road, I think the residents would agree, or at least I believe they do, it's always in great shape, but I think the additional traffic of heavy equipment will take a toll there, too, and end up costing the town of Rhinebeck some pretty good funds. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak tonight?
I'd like to speak to one other.
Okay.
Sorry, I thought I was going to be able to limit myself to one point tonight, but one other thing, since I don't think, I think I've neglected to mention this so far, but I just want also for the planning board members to be aware, really, of what kind of an area of Rhinebeck we're talking about. Obviously, everyone knows that it's a rural area, and that means different things to different people, but it's not just about, you know, people having to shut their windows when there's noise outside, and the resident, it's not even just about the residents of White Schoolhouse Road, Bollunbecker Road. You know, our, there's some acreage attached to our property, Landsman's Kill Trail Association uses it for events weekly, sometimes multiple times per week during the warmer months, so there's a ton of horseback riders, bird watchers, walkers, and every other type of naturalist that at least use our property, and I assume, you know, have friendly relationships with people in the other, in the surrounding areas. So this doesn't just affect the, however many residents there are on that road, and I also think it speaks to the specific character of the area we're talking about, and, you know, I still don't really see how a mine fits in so well with those other activities, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Pumpkin pickers. Growers.
So, anyone else care to speak? Yes. Well, you have to come, we just need you at the microphone, so that everyone can hear this, because...
I want to ask a question to the employee of Red Wing, whether he really does know how many trucks will be coming down daily at the very productive time.
The planning board can limit us, and right now, there was someone that commented before that there's been very limited activity on that property for the last several years. That's entirely due to the economy. Our other operations are much slower now than they were in 2008.
Do you have a forecast of how many trucks per day that you plan to operate?
We're saying 20.
Okay, 20.
We don't know, it may be two a day, it just depends on the economy.
Depends on what we...
Thank you.
Okay, I have to ask people to come up to the old microphone, if you want to speak to, because, so that everyone, because we have at least two people filming us, so this is a major production.
Steve LeBotsky, I'd just like to add to what she said. The economy is slow now, it's been real slow, not a lot of trucks, you know, yada, yada, yada. But when they, and we had limits on trucks, right? When they redid 308, what was that, 10, 12 years ago, there was like a truck every five minutes for six weeks. Nobody policed that, all right? So, the whole policing thing, doesn't happen.
Thank you.
What we're saying, saying to the chair is, it's my understanding that the former town permits did not limit the number of trucks, simply limited the size of the trucks to 10-wheel, 12-cubic yard capacity, but there was no limit
Right, at that time.
On the number of trucks within any hour, any day, or whatever. So that is something that...
I've seen tri axles and tractor trailers going in.
Well, those were supposedly limited under the...
And if you see that, you should call your zoning enforcement officer, which is, yeah, me. Charlie.
I just wanted to ask, it's my understanding that the LeBotskis are standing right here. And they, I wrote in the letter you just read, that it says that we're no longer going to offer access through that road, which passes his very, very historic barn, his, sorry Patty, their very historic barn, and their business, which is a fantastic workout place, so that I'd like to know what the alternative is, or I guess I could ask you guys, you guys are co-owners, you're not, you're not employees.
He is a geologist that works for me.
Oh, okay. So I would ask you, if you don't have access to, through that LeBotsky road, do you, do you have a plan to, to enter through another place?
Yeah, we do, we believe, first of all, that we have a written agreement with LeBotsky to use that, that road. We will get that information to the planning board between now and the next meeting. If we did not have access, we have, this, this is a quadrant angle map, so the red area here is the mine, this area here is what they own. The only other frontage they have would be coming out, you know, to the south around the ponds, coming up either here, or here, over near the, there's a couple of houses over there that...
Where the old pumpkin, pumpkin patch was.
It would be past that, yes, it would be.
Okay.
Anything else this evening? As, as people have said, as Steve and Mr. Wester have both said, the LeBotskis are not going to allow the use of the current access to the mine. Once I received this information, I spent time today with the assessors' office, and also going, we also had some inquiries down at the county about exactly, were there any easements, were there any, was there anything on any deed, anything like that, on either the land that the LeBotskis own, or the land that Red Wing owns, and the only thing we came up with was one utility easement across the land that Red Wing owns. We could find no legal document permitting use, we came to the conclusion, or at least I came to the conclusion based on that, that probably there was some handshake agreement between Mr. Kinlin and the LeBotskis. The LeBotskis were farming part of the land, and they could, Mr. Kinlin, or Jeff Decker, his, his person he had working there, could use the road to access the mine, and I'm sure it was agreed on a limited basis, whatever, and that's basically what it was. So, since I have not seen it in possession, and I cannot find any documentation of a written legal agreement, what I'm going to ask the town planning board to do is to continue this public hearing to our April meeting, so if there's documents like that, they can be brought to our attention, we can have them vetted and looked at, and see exactly what we're doing. I've talked to the town highway superintendent. If an alternative entrance to the mine is indeed required, it has to go also through her office, she has to approve where it comes out. There are a number of other factors that could be involved in that. So, if there's nothing else to be said tonight, what I would like to do is ask the planning board to continue this public hearing till April 7th, is the next meeting?
April 7th, 6:40, and I would, I'd recommend that the planning board add to that, that Mr. Durdy, submit whatever documentation he has concerning the access question to the board by, oh, March 17th, to allow for appropriate time for review.
St. Patrick's Day. Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Very good. So we will next convene on this issue on April 7th at 6:40. Okay. Moving right along. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to break for a few minutes, so everyone who wants to leave can leave, before we continue.
That's good, I was leaving anyway.
Yeah, Richard, you're going to be next. Paul, we do not have the documentation demonstrating road frontage, so no, we've had a request from the reading to continue that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Right, right. Oh, okay, really?
After today, Paula watched that whole historic, and she was a part.
Maybe it was the guy that used to sell minnows, baseballs.
I think I'm going to give Bob Fox a call, just because, you know, Bob might have... I think you and I should maybe... They're local, you know, we know, we trust them, I think we owe them that. I don't want to blindside them. I love my turtle!
Want to tell you, that one's coming down in Slay Court, Addison, intersection.
Okay. So cool. No, well, you know, they're getting better. Okay. Be nice. If, if everyone could please take their seats, and we'll get going, we have a lot of business to do tonight, and I haven't had dinner yet. Okay. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to close that door. Okay, everyone, we're back in order, or back in session, not in order, but we're back in session. Okay, the next public hearing is Richard Kopaczanski, Grinnell Street. This is the public hearing on application for subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101, subdivision of land and special use permits, and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125, zoning in the matter of proposed consolidation of two parcels in the Rhine Cliff Hamlet Overlay District, which will then total 1.41 acres in the Rhine Beck Hamlet and Overlay District. It's also in the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, the town's LWRA, and construction thereon of a single-family dwelling-related site improvements warrant.
Evening. I'm Warren Smith, architect, representing Richard Kopaczanski, who has a piece of property at the extreme southern end of Grinnell Street. Also happens to be the highest point of Grinnell Street, if you're sort of counterintuitive, but if you drive all the way to the end of Grinnell Street, right now, there's a huge amount of snow, where the town has been helpfully plowing the street, and that will be the access to Mr. Kopaczanski's property. There are actually, as Michael noted, two pieces of property. One is one of those famous paper roads in Rhine Cliff, it was mapped when Rhine Cliff was laid out in the 1800s, irregardless of the topography, kind of like San Francisco. And so there are quite a few roads in Rhine Cliff that were never actually built, because they couldn't be, they either went over rocks or down through swamps. But this one didn't do that, but it did run down the edge of this property, and eventually was supposed to connect down to Kelly Street, or whatever it's called, as it heads out toward Morton Road. And then, the rest of the property is immediately south of that. The two pieces together actually form a fairly large lot for Rhine Cliff at 1.41 acre. And right now, it's wooded, mostly second-growth wood, the, the ground rises toward the river. In fact, there's another house on the crest, so unfortunately, Mr. Kopaczanski will not have a view of the river. But it's a very secluded lot, and at the south start the large properties that border Morton Road, as it runs down toward Uldestein. So the intent is to come, make a turn at the end of Grinnell Street, and come southeast. There will be a septic system up here that's been engineered and approved by the Dutchess County Health Department, and it has to be a pump system, because there, we can't get the natural gravity flow, so there will be a pump chamber to a fill pad here. And then, the house will sit on really the, probably the only part of the property it could sit on, which is high, not terribly high, but, but higher certainly than up here, and sort of sits in observing all the setbacks, but it's going to be a little house in the woods, kind of secluded at the, the southern end of the Hamlet and Rhine Cliff. And that's the proposal, there are a couple of renderings of the house. Happy to answer any questions, board or the public?
I guess I'll start. Richard and I did the site visit, we climbed the mound of snow and looked down on the site. It's actually an excellent place, and the use of that land, I think, for this house. It's going to nestle right down in there, you're not really going to see it. The house is smaller than the 2,300 square feet that the Rhine Beck Overlay District stipulates, so, and it's certainly smaller than 35 feet tall, so there are no variances required, it seems it's going to fit right in there very nicely. We had a letter from Nancy Kelly, finding no objection to it, actually, that she thought it would also fit in quite nicely. I don't know if the CAB had any comment they wished to make. Okay, okay. Okay, yeah, I know, you had no heat. And that's, you know, we, Richard and I both thought it was perfectly good use for that property, as Warren says, it's one of the larger parcels within the Hamlet Overlay District, certainly through the consolidation process, so it's definitely not overstepping any bounds. Any questions from members of the planning board, for me or for Warren? Comments from the public? Hearing none. I believe it is a, since it's in the historic district, I do have a secret determination here that I can read. No, I don't? Yeah.
Question is, when was this referred to the waterfront committee?
Lisa, when, when, when did you get this application for, for referral to the CAB and the WAC?
They did look at it.
Do you know when you received it?
Oh, they looked at it.
Oh, they looked at it? So that's... Oh, oh, they were good.
You're good.
Yeah, we're good, okay, thank you.
I thought they hadn't, they hadn't...
Anything else before I embark upon, embark away? Okay. The Town of Rhine Beck Planning Board hereby access follows in the matter of a proposed action encompassing applications by Richard Kopaczanski for subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101, subdivision of land and special use permits, and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125, zoning to authorize consolidation of two parcels totaling 1.41 acres in the Rhine Cliff Hamlet and Rhine Cliff Overlay Districts, the National Historic Landmarks District, and the LWRA, and the single lot and the construction thereon of a single-family dwelling and related site improvements as depicted on a site plan C1, architectural plans A4, A1, and A5, and perspectives P1 through P4, all as prepared by Warren Temple Smith Architect LLC, and otherwise the subject of a full EAF Part 1 in coastal assessment form being a Type 1 action, due to its location within or adjacent to property listed on the National Register of Historic Places, which the planning board as sole involved agency and remaining permitting and approving jurisdiction is the Seeker Lead Agency. One, determines upon review of the EAF Part 1 and its own completion of EAF Part 2 in consideration of the criteria for determinate significance set forth entitled 6, Part 617.7C NYCRR, the historic preservation policies underlying the historic district designation and the pertinent coastal policy set forth within the town's LWRP, that the proposed action as described in the application will cause no potential significant adverse impact on the environment, and thus issues a negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance, deemed an environmental impact statement, it to not be required, and stating such will not be prepared. Two, authorizes the chairman to so execute the full EAF, and directs the planning board clerk to distribute and file the full EAF with negative declaration, annotation, and other documentation, as may be pertinent to an enlisted action in the manner set forth within Seeker Implementing Regulations Title 6, Part 617.12 NYCRR. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So would.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So would.
Second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Michael, on that basis, will you sign and date?
I think that our next public hearing, we have another public hearing.
Hold it, are you gonna move to the approval resolution?
That's what I was gonna do, yeah, if we don't have another public hearing sneaking up behind us, Carmichael. What time? I think we have to go to the Carmichael public hearing before we can do this. So, we do have the draft resolu... Where'd Warren go? Oh, there's Warren. That helps. We do have the draft resolution, we just have to do the next public hearing, and then we will have the draft resolution for you tonight.
He'll be here for hours.
Yeah, he's gonna be here forever, so... Alrighty. Okay, we have one more public hearing this evening. The Carmichael Road Enterprises LLC, Wilder Cliff, 2524 Mill Road and Morton Road subdivision plat, special use permit and site plan. This involves the conduct of a required combined public hearing on applications for subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101, subdivision of land and special use permit and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning in the matter of proposed consolidation of existing parcels totaling 37.7 acres in the Historic Preservation HB20 District, the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, and the town's LWRA, and both rehabilitation of the existing dwelling and site appurtenances and the construction of a tennis court thereon, the latter being a fourth accessory structure, a circumstance that can be authorized through issuance of a special use permit by the planning board. It's all yours.
So I'm McGinney, Lanchley Architect, from Inside Engineering, representing the applicant for Wilder Cliff. Brief run-through of the project. The existing residence is currently being rehabilitated, we have a building permit for that. The swimming pool is also being replaced, we have a permit for that as well. Let's see. We are also going to be repairing, replacing the septic system for the residence in this location over here, and the applicant is proposing to install a tennis court in this area over here, and that is the reason why we are requesting to consolidate the two lots. It would be a fourth accessory. It is not permitted in this zone as a primary use on this lot here, so, and we need a special permit for it to be a fourth accessory structure on the combined lots. We are, let's see, on Mill Road on this side, Morton Road on this side, and Hudson River over there.
Okay, who did the site visit for the planning board?
Yes, we went there on a very cold, deep snow day. And walked around. The consolidation seems to be a smart idea. The tennis court, seems like that's probably the best location for it. You can't really go further north because you go down into a wet area. Room for the septic system, so, I mean, it seems like they're really doing a really good job.
CAB, WAC?
We're in the place of the combining the Bay Bridge and the area, and I think it sounds very fortunate to have the owner and his students who are interested in the history of the property and willing to...
Thank you. Any public comment at this point?
I'm there, too.
Oh, Woody?
I suffered through the snow, too.
Was Woody there?
But you didn't hear me complaining.
No, that's why you were so stoic, I figure, well, she went by herself.
I, too, went on the site review, and I think the applicant and the owner are doing a great job in trying to keep the building as original externally as possible. There was obviously a significant amount of damage over the years of the building, that's being repaired. The only exposure that I see having, happening there is there's a discussion going on with Wilderstein, who was there with the CAB when we, and they chatted with this young lady, and there's some concern about Wilderstein's potting shed being the footprint of it running over into this property, no longer on Wilderstein. And they went off and talked, I don't know what the results were or are, but that's about it. I think it's an excellent approach to the whole site. It's nicely done.
Excellent. Any public comment at this moment?
I'm an outlander, I'm from Red Hook.
Welcome.
My name is Wynt Aldrich, I'm privileged to be the town historian in Red Hook. I live at 845 River Road at Barrytown, and I was privileged to be closely associated with Ms. Margaret Sookley for many years, served as the executor of her estate after her death, and I helped her establish Wilderstein Preservation, which was formed in 1980. And I thought it might be useful to the board to, just to get a quick sense of how the property ownership evolved to the present time when you're considering a merger of the two tax parcels. In the 1850s, the property, both Wilderstein and Wilder Cliff, right down to the Landsman's Kill, was owned by the Garrettson family, and in the 1850s, they gave what is now Wilderstein to their cousins, the Sookleys. And 20 years later, when Ms. Garrettson died, the Sookleys inherited the rest of Wilder Cliff down to the Kill, and for 75 years rented the house at Wilder Cliff to a series of friends and relatives. In the 18, in the 1950s, early 1950s, they sold Wilder Cliff on a reduced acreage to Professor DuPuy and his wife, and then in the early 1970s, the DuPuy's sold it to Richard Rockwell. At about that time, Ms. Sookley's two brothers died, Arthur and Robert, and she became concerned about the payment of estate taxes and other matters, and in developing a friendship with the Rockwells, it was agreed that she would sell the 16-acre lot from Wilderstein to the Rockwells, and that's how it comes to be a separate tax parcel today. When that property subdivision occurred, that is to say, from Wilderstein, the 16 acres, to the Rockwells at Wilder Cliff, the surveyor, whether through inattention or not, I don't know, my guess is not with the authorization from Ms. Sookley, who was at that point rather disabled with a broken leg, he drew the line directly through the remains of the greenhouse, the Wilderstein Greenhouse, where it is today, as you mentioned. And this seems like an unusual thing for a surveyor to do, but he definitely did it. And I would say that in the interest of establishing once again the intact character of Wilderstein and helping to encourage that wonderful success, which is doing so much, I think, for Rhine Beck's sense of itself and for the heritage tourism success of the entire region, that it would be marvelous if the planning board, working with the owner, or owners, I should say, of both properties, could work out with them some arrangement for a very, very slight boundary alteration as a part of the decision about the merger of the two tax parcels. I don't have to tell this board that both these properties are listed on the National Register of Historic Places as constituent parts, and very important constituent parts of the National Historic Landmark District, and it's another reason why the board has been, I think, so attentive to the cultural and environmental concerns of the properties along the river, and especially the very historic ones like Wilder Cliff and Wilderstein. And so if there's any way that that could become part of your discussions and your decision, it would be a highly desirable thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else with comments this evening?
Two comments later.
Okay.
Hi. Hello, I'm Greg Sakaris, I'm the executive director at Wilderstein, and I just wanted to express our concern about, first of all, the sighting of the tennis court. You know, we're a little bit concerned about the visual impact on Wilderstein locating it so close to our property line, and then, of course, the broader issue of the footprint of the Wilderstein Greenhouse. We feel there's an important opportunity here in terms of looking at that property line and making some adjustments, and we'd really love to have a dialogue and hope that the planning board might be supportive of that in some way in terms of potentially combining the properties and giving whatever variances may be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? And I say that because the 30 days hasn't expired for the Seeker circulation yet, so we will be continuing this public hearing to March 17th, and then the 30 days will be up, at which point we can then proceed.
Are there conversations going on between the owners of the two parcels?
We have requested information, some information that Greg has sent to us, and I forwarded on to the owner, and they, but what they'd like at this point is they'd like you to put your request in writing and forward it to them directly, exactly what you're looking for.
And if, you can do that within the next two weeks, this will be convening here again on St. Patrick's Day. Sorry, but...
I would just like to encourage that continued dialogue between both parties.
That's not something that I can address, you have to do it.
No, no.
Right, no.
But Woody alluded to the fact that he thought that there was conversation going on, so I thought it would benefit the board to know at what stage that was.
And you had a couple of comments?
I had two comments, they're generally been covered, but I'll maybe expound a little bit on them. One is, the first is, as you pointed out, Michael, the planning board is time-barred from proceeding this evening under either Seeker or with respect to a decision in that the 30-day period for designation as lead agency or concurrence as to designation of lead agency has not yet expired. The recommendation, obviously, is the one that you stated already, this public hearing should therefore be continued at the, I think, at the earliest possible date, which would be in March 17th at 6:45 or whatever that hour turns out to be. Secondly, with respect to the matter of the encroachment, quite clearly, this is a, I think it's an important matter that hopefully can be resolved. However, it is a private matter between two landowners. The planning board is under no obligation to resolve this matter as part of the current process. The planning board's obligation with respect to the subdivision plat is to make sure that the reputed encroachment is depicted and noted on the plat. And as Melody has already stated, I think it's important, however, for the board to encourage the owners to see if they can get together on this particular issue and jointly then submit another application to the planning board for subdivision of plat approval to effect a lot-line alteration, if that's what it turns out to be, between, what would have to be a lot-line alteration between the two parties. But that would be a separate application executed by the two parties involved and not part of the current proceeding. The other, obviously, the third issue that did come up that requires examination or maybe further field observation by the planning board is the comment by Wilderstein about the location of the tennis court vis-à-vis their, the Wilderstein property.
Well, and to that question, it would, I'd like to see perhaps some photographs from Wilderstein or some sort of presentation that shows us what...
More than words.
Yeah, you know, if we can see some kind of depiction as to what we might be looking at from Wilderstein's view shed, that would be helpful, because they've raised an issue of visual aesthetic purposes, so...
Well, there's a two-edged sword here. Where the tennis court is being proposed, if you take the applicant's view, he's gotta look at Wilderstein's parking lot, so it's...
Well, it might lead me to, it might lead me to asking for some sort of screening.
That discussion was done informally when we were on-site about screening and...
So that's on the table?
Again, it's between the two adjacent properties.
Can I, can I address that? As far as screening goes, we did have a discussion at the previous planning board meeting about the fence we were going to use and that it would be black, which would make it recede, and that is one way we are mitigating that to reduce its visual impact. In addition, we are showing screening on the plan. We haven't defined exactly what that's going to be, but we will gladly do so if you, you know, would like us to just need to request that. There is a good amount of existing native vegetation already between us and the property line, and we can take photos if you'd like, provide those, you know, to give an idea. I have already taken photos from our site towards theirs to show what we see, just to get an idea of whether...
Fair is fair, yeah.
Both ways.
What you see, yes.
Right, I mean, they certainly don't, you know, they're private people, they're not looking to have, you know, people on the adjacent parcel looking at them.
Didn't you also state when we did the site view that there would be no lighting of the tennis court?
Correct. The tennis court will not be lit.
So on the final plat, when it comes to us, that's where the screening would be depicted, and at that point, so that that could be finally approved?
Yeah, I would think in addition to the showing the screening, the landscaping, whatever's going to happen, that it might be also helpful in the interest of a positive relationship with the neighboring party to simply show a clearing limit line on the, on the site plan.
We actually have one shown on the site plan. There is a, a one and a parent shown on the site plan, as well as proposed screening. And also, based on discussions in the field and the concerns of the neighbor, we have looked into shifting the tennis court a little bit to the southwest, which, as we're currently depicting it on the site plan, it is 151 feet, one corner of it is 151 feet from the property line, the rest of it is obviously further away. If we shift it a little bit to the southeast, the way we're proposing, it would make it 170 feet, and there would be, if you look, this entire area, this whole 150 feet is vegetated. So we're talking 150 feet of existing shrub and tree cover, which we're going to supplement, and if we shift it, we'll have even more.
Okay. Anything else? Yes. Actually, you have to come up to the old microphone.
Oh, just to ask, which is Morton, which is Mill? This is Mill Road? Okay. The front on, for the majority on Mill Road, and this is Morton, up here, and there's the corner there. And Wilderstein is up here.
Anything else tonight? Okay, what I'm gonna do is, could I hear a motion to continue this public hearing to March 17th, and I guess...
6:45.
6:45.
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Aye? Very good, thank you.
Oh, sorry, could you just show me where that potting shed is, on the map?
She is right here. Can you see that? Across the line?
Yeah. I think it's of interest to note that the, when a surveyor, when they did the subdivision along the river, along the Ellersly property, the surveyor drew a line right through the old Ellersly, that beautiful old stone barn, the remains of it, so part of it belongs to one neighbor and the other belongs to the other neighbor, so apparently there's a certain surveyor's tendency in this town to divide historic...
To dissect buildings?
Remains amongst neighbors. Okay. Thank you. What I'll do now is, I'll get Richard's, so Richard can go home. We have the approval resolution for Richard, and then we can, then we'll move ahead. Okay. The Town of Rhine Beck Planning Board, upon noticing posting and conduct, did I? That's the right one. Okay, okay.
Bottom page, aye, Michael?
Yes, okay. Upon noticing posting and conduct a combined public hearing, making of required referrals and consideration of input received hereby, access follows in the matter of a proposed action encompassing, excuse me, applications by Richard Kopaczynski for subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101, subdivision of land and special use permits and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning to authorize the consolidation of two parcels totaling 1.41 acres in the Rhine Cliff Hamlet and the Rhine Cliff Overlay Districts and the LWRA into a single lot and the construction thereon of a single-family dwelling and related site improvements as depicted in a site plan C1, architectural plans A1, A4, A5, and perspectives P1 through P4, all as prepared by Warren Temple Smith Architects LLC, and otherwise the subject of a full EAF Part 1 and coastal assessment form being a Type 1 action due to its location within... a type 1 action due to its location within or adjacent to property listed on the National Register of Historic Places for which the Planning Board as sole involved agency with remaining permitting or approving jurisdiction has issued a negative declaration determination of nonsignificance under seeker, including incorporated statement of consistency with pertinent coastal policies as set forth in the town's LWRP. One, in consideration of the application for subdivision plat approval for the minor subdivision consolidation of the two parcels totaling 1.41 acres, approves the application and authorizes the chairman to stamp and sign the subdivision plat upon the applicant's satisfaction of each of the below conditions and/or requirements within 180 calendar days of the Planning Board's adoption of this resolution. A, submission of subdivision plat drawings in the number and form specified within Town Code Chapter 101, including thereon both all required stamps, seals, and certifications set forth in the Chapter 101, or as may be otherwise deemed acceptable by the chairman in the circumstance of consolidation in their entirety of existing parcels. Two, stamping of the subdivision plat in the form required above as non-jurisdictional subdivision or for filing purposes only by the Dutchess County Health Department. Documentation of proposed consolidation of parcels has been considered and found acceptable at the Town Assessor and the Dutchess County Real Property Tax Service. Payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due the Town of Ryanbeck with respect to the submission, review, and processing of the application under Town Code Chapter 101, the town's fee schedule and related executed escrow agreement. Two, in consideration of the application for special use permits under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning to authorize the above-described construction of the consolidated 1.41 acre parcel on the consolidated 1.41 acre parcel of a single-family dwelling and related site improvements, including onsite sanitary sewage facilities heretofore approved by the Dutchess County Health Department, A determines the proposed use to in no way contravene any of the general standards for all special use permits as set forth in chap, in Section 125-67 therein. B, further determines the proposed use to be in performance with specific standards as set forth in Section 125-40H3 therein for development within 1,000 feet of the Hudson River and the objective standards and guidelines set forth in Section 125-69 therein for any development undertaken within Reincliffe Overlay District. C, grants the above-sighted special use permits pursuant to said Chapter 125 of the Town Code and subject to the following prerequisite conditions and/or requirements. Payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due the Town of Ryanbeck with respect to the submission, review, and processing of this application under Town Code Chapter 125, the town's fee schedule and executed escrow agreement. Two, securing a site plan approval for the proposed development and subsequently a certificate of occupancy for the proposed use. Three, in consideration of the application for site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning inclusive of the site plan, architectural plans, and perspectives cited above, and the aforementioned permit design approval issued by the Dutchess County Health Department, A waives any further site plan requirements as might be construed to be set forth within the Town Code. B, approves the application for site plan approval and authorizes the chairman to so note on a set consisting of the site plan and related drawings upon the applicant's satisfaction of the following condition and/or requirement within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. Payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due the Town of Ryanbeck with respect to the submission, review, processing of this application under the Town Code Chapter 125, the town's fee schedule and executed escrow agreement. In taking this action, the Planning Board further authorizes the town's zoning enforcement officer to issue a certificate of occupancy for proposed single-family dwelling and related site improvements upon his determination. All other codes, laws, rules, or regulations within the purview of the ZEO and/or building inspector, including but not limited to the requirements of the New York State Uniform Building Construction and Fire Prevention Code, have been satisfied. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Aye.
Discussion? Hearing none. Woody?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. You can go home. All right, moving right along, to regular business. First item up, Mench Grassmere LLC, New York State Route 9 and Mill Road, seeker finding statement and special use permit. Basically, we're doing us two things tonight. If you've seen Art's, Art's notes, we're doing the reviewing of the finding statement, which Art gave us all at our last meeting. You've had two weeks to study them scrupulously, and I believe they stand, I think there was, there was one or two little additions referring to possible...
Deal with that.
Right, uses down the road, and the manner of adopting those, and if timely, and hopefully it will be, the application for special use permit for Country Inn 2 under Town Code Chapter 125. So I think the first thing is to address the finding statement.
And the finding statement, you know, as was discussed at our work session on February 18th, special meeting work session, and transmitted to you folks on the morning of the 19th is this particular document sets forth the findings of the Planning Board following the conduct of review process, seeker review process on the Grassmere Farm Hotel Development. Basically summarizes the project and the environmental review that did occur, sets forth the potential impacts that were explored, the findings with respect to each of those impacts, and the proposed mitigation measures that are built into the project, and that will be essentially considered and monitored by the Planning Board as the project moves forward beyond seeker review into special use permit consideration, site plan consideration, et cetera. That's the document of February 19th. I've, was authorized at that point in time to not only submit the document to the, to you folks for review, but also to run a copy by the applicant with respect to the applicant's finding of any factual errors in the draft finding statement that I had prepared. The applicant found no factual errors, or reported to me no factual errors, but did, did comment that I had unduly, I think, restricted in two of the responses to the special permits standards, I had unduly restricted the potential for flexibility down the road. And there were two modifications that I did transmit to you folks by email of last, well, the 26th, whatever day of the week that happened to be, on February 26th. So what I'm recommending this evening is that unless there's any dissenting opinion or opinion or discussion, that the board issue the finding statement as it was transmitted on February 19th, but inclusive of the two modifications that were stated on, were stated on February 26th, and authorize the clerk with my assistance to circulate, post, circulate, file, et cetera, that document as required under the, under the seeker regulations. At this point in time, that would conclude the seeker process. I say "at this point in time" because there are two follow-up actions that will occur as this project proceeds through, through review both locally and at state and county agencies. One is that locally, you will have to determine at each step along the way that the project remains consistent with the finding statement and with the mitigation measures, incorporates the mitigation measures identified in the finding statement. And each of the other involved agencies must review your findings and either state concurrence or issue findings apart from your findings with respect to any matter within this particular jurisdiction of that, that agency, DOT, with respect to the access questions or the Health Department or DEC or whomever. Generally, there's concurrence with the, with the findings of the lead agency, but there is always the opportunity for, not only opportunity, but there's an obligation for the other agencies to take a look and prospectively issue findings that depart in some way. So that's the, that's the situation with respect to seeker. If one, if the board moves beyond that particular point this, this evening, then there is a, another matter, and that relates to the scheduling of a public hearing on the special use permit application. That application was first submitted on July 1st of last year. That application would be considered amended at this point in time to incorporate probably the one significant change that has occurred in the project between July 1 of 2013 and today, and that is the redeployment of the Mill Road entrance, Mill Road access point as an entrance only for hotel guests and not as a two-way exit entrance for any purpose within the development. That's, that's generally the situation. You have in your notes two, two draft resolutions, and obviously, you're, I'm available to answer any questions you might have about the finding statement or proceeding with the special permit.
You've all seen the, the addendums that Art sent subsequent to when he gave us the large missive that you all read carefully.
Yes.
Yeah?
We.
Yeah, we.
We.
Okay. I have, do you have any objection to the document as amended by Art's? Okay, and the draft resolution I'm going to read pertains to that document plus the addendums that Art added. "The Town of Ryanbeck Planning Board has duly confirmed seeker lead agency hereby access follows in the matter of a proposed action by Mench Grassmere LLC applicant involving development of the Grassmere Farm Hotel within a 250, 250-acre set aside of a 525-acre property on Mill Road and New York State Route 9 South in the Rural Agricultural RA 10 and Hudson River National Historic Landmark Districts and the town's local waterfront revitalization area, being the subject of an application for special use permit for a Country Inn 2 submitted to the Planning Board on July 1st, 2013, and heretofore classified as a type 1 action under seeker for which coordinated environmental quality review has been undertaken. One, adopts the annexed seeker environmental quality review findings statement Grassmere Hotel Development as set forth in a draft prepared in consultation with the Planning Board by the town's planning consultant and distributed to the board for its consideration on February 19th, 2014, and amend and..."
And, and inclusive of recommended modifications transmitted on February 26, 2014.
Thank you. Two, authorizes the Planning Board Chairman to execute the certification of lead agency findings to approve, set forth on page 101 therein, and reading as follows. "In consideration of the foregoing, the Town of Ryanbeck Planning Board has duly confirmed seeker lead agency for proposed action hereby certifies the following. One, the relevant environmental impacts, facts, and conclusions disclosed in the final generic EIS have been considered. Two, the relevant environmental impacts have been weighed and balanced with social, economic, and other considerations. Three, a rationale has been provided for the agency's decision. Four, the requirements of Title VI, Part 617 NYCRR have been met. Five, consistent with the social, economic, and other considerations from among the reasonable alternatives thereto, the action proposed for approval is one that avoids or minimizes adverse environmental effects as disclosed in the final generic EIS to the maximum extent practicable. And six, consistent with the social, economic, and other essential considerations from among the reasonable alternatives available, the action is one that avoids or minimizes adverse environmental effects to the maximum extent practicable, and that adverse environmental impacts will be avoided or minimized to the maximum extent practicable by incorporating within this finding statement and as conditions for all future decisions made by the Planning Board in the matter of the Grassmere Farm Hotel Development those mitigation measures that were identified as practicable. Three, directs the Planning Board Clerk with the assistance of the town's planning consultant to issue, file, and notice the certified finding statement in the manner provided under Article 8 ECL Environmental Conservation Law and Title VI, Part 617.12 NYCRR, with a full copy thereof sent undercover of a certified copy of this resolution to each of the agencies and persons set forth on the distribution list incorporated within the prior notice of completion of the generic EIS."
One modification, it's, because it's not necessary for the, to this resolution, and secondly, the page number probably changes with the modifications. Delete under, on the number two paragraph, the words "at page 101."
Okay.
It may be page 102 or 103 now, but doesn't, it's not, it's not important.
Okay. How about "as set forth therein"?
Yes, you're just going to delete the words...
At page 101.
At, at page 101.
Okay. So done. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? I will poll the board. Bob?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. Having successfully done that, the next draft that we have addresses the special use permit.
And I indicated, Michael, that there was one change that did occur, actually, there were two that relate to the amendment of the special use permit. At your February 18th meeting, you reviewed and accepted or endorsed, or whatever word you want to use, the prospective 250...
The specific...
Configuration of the 250-acre parcel. So the special use permit is now more explicitly related to that configuration as it was accepted by the board at the last meeting, as opposed to a more generic statement, which was 250 acres within a 525-acre parcel. We now know what those 250 acres are.
Correct. Very good. Okay, well, here we go. "The Town of Ryanbeck Planning Board, upon review of the zoning enforcement officer," ooh, good for him, "hereby access follows in the matter of an application by Mench Gardens LLC applicant for special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Article III Use Regulations, Section 12520 District Schedule of Use Regulations, and Article VI Special Use Permit Requirements, Section 12567 General Standards, and Section 12568 Specific Standards for Certain Uses, Section MM Country Inn 2, in the matter of the Grassmere Hotel, Grassmere Farm Hotel Development within a, within a proposed 250-acre parcel created through the consolidation of a number of lots here, running on Mill Road and New York State Route 9 South and the Rural Agricultural RA 10 and the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, the Estates District Scenic Area of Statewide Significance, and the town's Loden Waterfront Revitalization Area. The special use permit for Country Inn 2 being one of the approvals within an overall proposed action, subject to the following, with the latter two actions occurring in the Planning Board's role as duly designated seeker lead agency for coordinated environmental quality review of the Grassmere Farm Hotel Development. Prior review and recommendation by the town's waterfront advisory committee as to the consistency with coastal policies during the time period of the Planning Board's preparation of the final generic environmental impact statement. The final GEIS deemed complete by the Planning Board on February 3, 2014, and made available for public and agency consideration, the finding statement adopted by the Planning Board on March 3, 2014. One, accepts the application for special use permit for a Country Inn 2 submitted to the Planning Board on July 1, 2013, and as modified to incorporate the alternate site plan set forth by the applicant in response to comments on the draft generic EIS and declared by the Planning Board to be the preferred or project alternative in the final generic EIS. B, more specifically depict the boundaries of the 250, more specifically having depicted the boundaries of the 250-acre project site as set forth on drawing SK 2.0, and both reviewed and found acceptable by the Planning Board during sketch plan conference on February 18, 2014. Schedules a public hearing on the application for special use permit, Country Inn 2, for Monday, April 3, 2014.
April 7.
Seven. Seven, ooh, yes, thank you. Hmm, we write by that. April 7, 2002.
No, no, yeah, April 7. It's April 7 at 7. Yeah.
Just making it more difficult.
Yeah, it's a double seven there.
Okay.
Correction and a...
Joni, I'm sure got that. If I didn't. "As set forth within the annexed notice of public hearing and directs the Planning Board Clerk to undertake and/or otherwise cause noticing and posting thereof in strict accordance with the provisions of Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Sections 12566 and 12577." Oh, that 77 keeps showing up. You might want to take note of that. "Further directs the Planning Board Clerk to distribute the agricultural data statement submitted by the applicant to those parties required to receive said statement in accordance with the provisions of the New York State Agriculture and Markets Law. Four, refers the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for review and advisory opinion pursuant to the requirements of Sections 239 I and M of the generally municipal law. Refers the application to the Town of Ryanbeck Conservation Advisory Board for review and comment." Excuse me. "Request further technical assistance of the application by the town's planning consultant and without prejudice to requirement for careful consideration by the Planning Board of any input that arises through the continuing review process as set forth above, authorizes and directs the planning consultant to prepare the working drafts of both an LWRP statement of consistency and a resolution of approval with conditions and/or requirements of the application for special use permit, Country Inn 2, such authorization and directive consistent with the aforementioned finding statement." Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. So we'll see you on the 7th at 7, and good luck.
Be here for a presentation.
Yeah. Okay, moving right along. Next is Peter Henkrathen Chirapko, 383 Morton Road, County Road 80, no, yes, County Road 84, Site Plan Review. "This agenda invited, item involves the initial presentation of an application for site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, including supporting architectural plans, full EAF Part 1 coastal assessment form, and agricultural data statement in the matter of a proposed renovation and additions to a two-story dwelling on a 1.44 acre parcel in the Historic Preservation HP20 zoning district, the Hudson River Historic Landmarks District, and the Town of Ryanbeck local waterfront revitalization area and adjacent to a certified agricultural district." The site plan requirement here is because the structure itself is a designated landmark, and therefore it requires site plan review under seeker. No, under our town zoning law. Oof, I know I get something right. Yeah?
That's one big misresolution, too, again. I have a...
Take it away.
I'm Peter Chirapko. I'm here with my wife Catherine Ferguson-Chirapko, and with us is Peter Humphrey, who is, where are you, Peter?
Humphrey.
He is, he is a builder with whom we've been working in the process of planning for this project. This, this property is located at the corner, at the juncture of, of Mill Road and, and Morton... He is a builder with whom we've been working in the process of planning for this project. This property is located at the corner, at the juncture of Mill Road and Morton Road, and it's a two-story house built in 1891, 1892. Our proposal is to add to the living area of it, it's continuing to be the same use as residence. Our proposal is to add on the north end of the house, basically a dining area or a general-purpose room. Sorry, pardon me. The existing house is approximately, the existing house itself is approximately 27 by 36 feet, and we're adding to the back of it an area that is approximately 15 by 21. This is the way the property looks from the road. There's the house, there's a garage, and the only exterior things that we're adding to the existing space, the existing building as it stands, there were two dormers on the east side, we're adding dormers to the west, which will give a kind of a symmetry, although that's not our goal, we just think it's an important thing to do for the interior organization. We're putting new windows in of the same type, and basically, in terms of the ethos of this addition, pardon me, we are keeping to the materials and the forms and the sort of the spirit of the house as it stands. There are some modifications, which are the basis of architectural planning. The back of this that we're adding to is setback from a few feet from each side of the north end of the house, so that there's not just a straight extension to the house, there's a setback which makes it plain that this is an addition, but yet it's in the same hand, the same hand as the existing building. These are the dormers that we are duplicating on the other side of the house, and as an example of the details that are going on here, we have the slope roof and the battening, which is the kind of battening that the house has existing. We changed the spacing of the battening to express the appropriateness for the size of that addition, as opposed to just adding the same thing continuing to the back. If you take a look at the front of the entry to the house on the street, there is a porch that has basically a gambrel roof, which is a shed roof with two sides of a slope. As it turns out, in the course of our considerations, that is the kind of roof that we're doing in the back of our addition. In other words, we have a porch in the front, and then what you might call exactly twice the size, twice the dimensions, the addition on the north of a shed roof and two-sided gambrel extension. So you have a shed on two sides that come down to create this. You see the continuation of the materials, the continuation of the style, and that's basically what we're trying to do. It's an approach which we set onto in the course of our work, and it's an approach that we feel that we're trying to keep within the historic appropriateness for the building. Sorry about my voice.
All right. I sympathize.
Well, you seem to be...
So far, so good.
Much better than I am.
So far, so good.
Okay. Are there any questions about the material aspects of the project?
You're going to put copper roof on the back as well, is it already on the porch?
The same roof that's already there. We decided that that could have been the case, but it doesn't have to be. That's sort of the choice that we made.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a resolution, I believe that...
Any comment from Melody on the question I raised in my meeting notes about archaeology? Because it's one of the criteria that the Planning Board needs to say yes or no on under the zoning law.
I wanted to mention that this follows, for everybody else's application, this follows a preliminary presentation one month ago to Group of Three.
Yes.
And I continue exactly from that time and from the direction we gave to this.
Yes, no, this is identical to what you presented to us at that time.
Basically, except I put some trees here.
Well, it looks nicer, yeah.
Well, you know, I think there needs to be monitoring minimally during site excavation. You know, I would expect to find a builder's trench back there, but I don't know that I'd go so far as to do pre-construction investigation, but I think monitoring is called for.
I frankly concur, but the question that was being raised, for those who, again, for the audience, et cetera, was whether or not, the question I raised was whether any pre-construction archaeological investigation, or perhaps monitoring during site excavation, would be required, and obviously, Melody has indicated that...
To the point there, there is an extension on the back of this that is 6 by 12 feet. It's in terrible repair. We don't believe it was original to the original building. It has its own stone foundation, which we are keeping, so in terms of finding clay pipes, I don't think we're going to find too many underground, but I'm a little surprised at that sense, but because from whatever we've seen, it's just a matter of the stone foundation of the house, and then a stone 6 by 12 rubble wall foundation also. I mean, I think that we will be aware of something that we find, I'm not sure what monitoring included. You should address that to this gentleman, the likely founder.
Yeah.
I certainly appreciate it.
That would probably be what we would look for, wouldn't it? Yeah, I just, you know, as Peter's, you know, doing the excavation, just, you know...
Careful observation.
Do it with a shovel.
Do it with a shovel.
Sift through.
Well, we're doing it during, you know, we're coming up on weather.
Yes, this was a school.
Don't we know where outhouses were?
Oh, good question. You know where the outhouse was.
This was a school, so one would expect that there would have been outhouses somewhere on the property associated with it, so, I mean...
I didn't see any remnants of it.
Well, but I think we're just suggesting that as you're doing that excavation, that we would anticipate...
What paragraph you would put before us, which I think is the appropriate means of handover, we would do our best.
Yeah, and that's...
That would be on the title.
Right, it's a small enough excavation anyway, so it wouldn't be, I don't think it'd be a great burden anyway, just what you're going to be doing.
And we're not attempting to do any excavation during this time of year.
Right.
There are colleagues that are doing that, and they're not here.
Yeah. Okay.
I think the important thing for the board this evening, and for the applicant this evening, is essentially just the determination, if you will, on the part of the board that pre-construction archaeological work does not have to be done, and that's the important thing. Because if the answer was different, you'd want to move, well, you'd want to move on that soon, but the frozen ground might not allow you to do that either.
Yeah, that's true.
Historically, that land down there is all clay anyway, so to find archaeological stuff in the clay would be, in my opinion, quite remote.
Well, I can point out one important but essentially small programmatic fact, which is that the way this project can progress, we can do the house itself relatively soon. We're three-quarters of the way through the review on the building development, and the remainder part in a kind of a stage tour, you know, separate.
Yeah, which is fine.
I mean, it lends itself to, I wouldn't say staging, but parts.
And that's, we have no problem with that, that's fine. Any other questions before I embark again on a reading assignment?
Yeah, how, does the new addition meet the property line...
Oh, yes, there's no...
To the rear, because it's not that far from the rear of the property.
We have 15 or 20 feet remaining before we ever got to that point, and that was established in my first meeting back in November.
Okay, I wasn't part of those, so it's why I'm asking.
I didn't want to...
Thank you.